Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time-travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core State Standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at CommonCoreWorks.org.
I'm a student at Harvard.
I'm IT.
Cal Tech.
Columbia.
Our advantage: support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at OCPS.net or call 407-317-3200.
Wow, school must start Monday because y'all are the quietest crowd we've ever had here before the start of a meeting, but welcome to the Orange County School Board. We're so pleased to have you with us here tonight. Tonight, we have invited, and we were just taking pictures with her, the president of the Orange County Council of PTAs, Madeline Plume Cruz, to lead us in our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance. Maddie, would you please stand and come to the podium? And we'd also like to have join us up there at the lectern Tammy Weaver, our immediate past president of the Orange County Council of PTAs. Maddie and Tammy, thank you both so very, very much for all your service to the children of Orange County. And we're going to brag on you a little bit more after you do the pledge and the moment of silence.
Please stand and join me for the moment of silence. Please remain standing and join me with saying our pledge of allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." You may be seated.
Well, Maddie and Tammy, sorry to throw you there. I should have turned the page on my script. You were looking at me, I'm like, okay. Thank you so much for all you do. I know I speak for our entire board when I say, and administration, that we all believe that parental involvement is absolutely key to the success of Orange County Public Schools. And y'all are two paradigms of intensive parental involvement, and you really exemplify all that is best in Orange County Public Schools. And Tammy, you are an absolute superwoman. You've served not one, but two consecutive terms at the head of the Orange County Council of PTAs. And members of the audience, I want you to know that from my perspective, at least, when Tammy took over the Orange County Council of PTAs, it's always been a wonderful organization, but she has really taken it to new heights in terms of membership, in terms of involvement, and in terms of cohesiveness and unity of message. So Tammy, I think you should be very, very proud because we have a much stronger parent support organization in Orange County Public Schools today, thanks in large part to your efforts. And I just really want to applaud you for that. Maddie, now that I set the bar so high, good luck.
[laughing]
You've got some big shoes to fill, but we'd love to hear from you for a moment if you'd like to say a few words, and Tammy as well, if she would like.
I'd like to introduce my fellow officers from OCCPTA who are here with me tonight. Please stand when I call your name. Valerie Radcliffe. Frank Matucci. Leisha Gray. Danielle Plume. And Jean Hovey, who is our area, I'm sorry, our executive director for Florida PTA. Chair Sablet, school board members, and Dr. Jenkins. We look forward to working with you, and we're having a wonderful year. I have been a member of a PTA either here in New York State since my children were quite young. I have three children, one who graduated from university high school and two who are attending. Why PTA? It is simple for me. We need to bridge the gap with parents and schools, especially for parents and students who don't know the how-to's or how it works in Florida. Now at county level, we want to do the same. We want OCCPTA to show that we, as parents and community members, can advocate for all children, how it used to be done back in the days when a community raised a child. Thank you.
I love this, "I'm not president anymore, so I don't have to be on script." So everybody who's ever had to live with a script, you know how much that means to you. If anybody else is a member of a PTA, please stand and be recognized. What we do, we do because of all of you, for all the children, not just the 184,000 children of OCPS, but we go from birth to college and/or career. So that's a lot of work that we do. Now that I'm no longer president, I don't get so many emails, which is awesome, but I'm always available. I'm also still on the Florida PTA State Board as their scholarship chair, and that is a wonderful experience. I love the team that they've given me here. But my success in everything that you credited me for was not possible without the people I had to work with. So to them, those who are here, thank you, and to those who are not, know that I love them. Thank you.
Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. It just seems like time flies. It was probably over a decade ago that I was in the same position with the Orange County Council of PTA. It was really good back then, too, Mr. Chair, so I just want to let you know. But the golden years. But you know, I want to say, I've never worked so hard in a position as I did being a president of the OCCPTA. So these ladies really deserve not just a round of applause, but great respect from us because they are working right there on the front lines with parent involvement. PTA stands for Parent Teacher Association. It is a national organization. It's the largest organization of volunteers. It does not need to be taken lightly. Whenever I hear of a local unit leaving PTA because of the dues, it just makes me heart sick. Because what you get with a PTA and what these ladies provide is organization, you get the 501(c)(3) automatically as long as you have those bylaws and dues paid up, and you get so much, so many resources about parent involvement, about how to advocate on a local level, how to put together a campaign. I'm taking this time because I've got a lot of principals and assistant principals and people out there, so I want to say, please, don't dismiss it because it's a powerful organization. You're going to see them probably ramping up to help support us in some very big issues that we have before us for next year. So I want to thank you all for taking it on. I respect you, and I thank you so much for what you're doing, and I want to make sure everybody supports them and supports your local PTA. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Weaver, again, thank you for all your service. And Ms. Plume Cruz, have a wonderful year, and I just want to echo everything Ms. Flynn said. Well said, Darrell. And you know, I will share with you, as a parent myself of three children in public school, the first thing you learn, too, when you're a new parent of children in public school is you don't mess with the local PTA.
[laughing]
As every principal out there can probably attest, and it is a hallmark of a great school. So have a wonderful year, and we look forward to our continued partnership. Thank you. All right, Dr. Jenkins, strategic plan update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an exciting new grant that has come to our fair city. I'm going to ask Liba Lyons if she would give us the introduction. It involves a partnership with some entities that we are very familiar with that have proven to be quite an impactful partner for the district, not only in this location, but in others as well. And as they go through their presentation, you will become well-aware of the reason for my comments. Dr. Lyons.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the school board, and Superintendent Jenkins, I'm honored and delighted this evening to introduce to you Marcia Hope Goodwin, who's the chief service officer for the City of Orlando, and Lisa Early, Director of Families, Parks, and Recreation for the City of Orlando. It's been really a very great honor and my good fortune to work with both of these ladies over the past five years that I've been in the district office. Marcia has been with the city since December of 1992, and she's a member of Mayor Buddy Dyer's senior staff. She assists the mayor and the Orlando City Council and city staff in developing and implementing the city's community and human relations missions. Her responsibilities include oversight of the mayor's matching grants program, Orlando Cares, Community Affairs, and Human Relations. She is a staunch supporter of Orange County Public Schools and has been a wonderful friend and colleague to me throughout the years of Race to the Top. Lisa Early is the Director of Families, Parks, and Recreation, and she has worked with the City of Orlando since November 2003, when she was appointed as the city's first Director of Children in Education. Prior to that, Lisa Early worked helping children in the United States and abroad. After graduating with a bachelor's degree in human development and family studies from Cornell in 1981, Lisa moved to the Dominican Republic, where she worked with UNICEF to develop preschool education programs for children living in rural villages. And next, she worked with the U.S. Agency for International Development overseeing programs to improve the health of mothers and children living in poverty. So as you can well understand from her bio, Lisa is a passionate advocate for the welfare of children and families. She has been a fantastic colleague to me as we have worked together to build programs for the benefit of the students of Orange County. So ladies and gentlemen, please welcome first to the podium Marcia Hope Goodwin.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Liba, for that very kind introduction. It has been more than a pleasure working with you all over the years, and you have really had an impact and a champion for education, and I'm sure all of your colleagues are aware. Chairman Sablet, school board members, and Superintendent Jenkins, I bring you greetings on behalf of Mayor Buddy Dyer and our city council. And as a proud second-generation alumnus of Orange County Public Schools and the daughter of Nathaniel and Jean Evans, who served in the school district for more than 60 years collectively, I am honored to be with you today. Last December, Governor Rick Scott's staff reached out to Mayor Dyer to propose an opportunity for collaboration to support our city's education initiatives and partnerships with Orange County Public Schools and others. And this partnership is through the Corporation for National and Community Service Resources, and it would provide national service resources to enhance further our school district. And of course, we already have those great resources in our school district, so you'll hear how this will allow us to expand that. The governor could have chosen only one city, one city mayor, to partner with because the corporation required that it be one city and one governor partnering to make this happen. And Governor Scott reached out to Mayor Dyer to apply for the Corporation for National and Community Services Governor and Mayor's Initiative Grant. And he chose Orlando, and Mayor Dyer, he told me, for several reasons. One, because Orlando is a leadership city in the Cities of Service National Coalition. Also, because Orlando cares, the city's High Impact Service Plan engages AmeriCorps vistas and volunteers to support education in our schools and after-school. Also, because, of course, City Year Orlando, the successful intervention that you all have sponsored and supported, supports high-need schools with AmeriCorps members. And finally, he said, because Mayor Dyer leads so many partnerships with Orange County Public Schools already, including the Paramore Kids Zone, the After-School All-Stars, Third Grade REEDs powered by REED to Succeed, and the Mayor's Matching Grants, just to name a few. Last month, we learned that our Governor and Mayor's Initiative Grant was funded by the Corporation for National and Community Service for $587,000, which will provide 32 additional AmeriCorps members, 20 to our city programming, 10 to the City Year Orlando, and 2 to the Heart of Florida United Way, all to provide academic and social supports to students who attend low-performing schools. Just as a little background and context, Florida is one of eight states nationally to receive this first-time competitive funding. And our local partners are matching the grant with $183,000. Before Lisa Early, my colleague and the city's Director of Families, Parks, and Recreation describes the details of the Orlando Partnership for School Success, or OPAS, which her department will implement with City Year Orlando, I would like to recognize the team that worked with us to complete the GMI application in just a few weeks, literally. First, of course, we thank and appreciate Liba Lyons for her guidance as the Race to the Top director and her team here at OCPS. Jordan Plant, who is here, the executive director of City Year Orlando, and Erin Bennett, her colleague, who is in Boston, the grants manager for the National City Year, who was also invaluable. And Jordan is here today with her program manager and the core members who will actually serve at Catalina Elementary. You'll hear from Jordan shortly. Also Julie Tyndall, who kind of corralled the whole grant process from my team, the Community Outreach Coordinator, who also manages and coordinates our Mayor's Matching Grants Initiative. And Tyler Chandler, our executive director of the After-School All-Stars team. Guys, you can stand up. Come on, they won't know who you are. Stand up. Our After-School All-Stars team executive director, who is going to lead the charge as we move forward and will be our local manager of OPAS. And of course, Lisa. Stand up, Lisa. This is the team, along with their teams, that actually pulled this together. Please join me in thanking them. Liba. Thank you all. Okay, before I go, let me also acknowledge our partners from, I think, Heart of Florida United Way. Is anybody here? No, but I want to acknowledge them anyway, Heart of Florida United Way, and the Foundation for Orange County Public Schools, who also worked with us. On behalf of Mayor Dyer, I would also like to thank the Corporation for National and Community Service and Volunteer Florida, the Governor's Commission on Community Service, for this great new opportunity to support our students and our schools. Let me acknowledge Suzanne Richards, our local CNCS state director, who is based in Orlando, and a member of the Volunteer Florida Board. Thank you, Suzanne. And now Lisa will give you the details. Lisa?
Thank you, Marcia. School board members, what a pleasure it is to speak to you, and I don't know if you noticed the City Year folks doing something like this. What is that?
You know, it's funny, they come before so often. When we have heated public hearings, we ask people not to applaud or cheer, it's not a pep rally, so they're well-trained. Way to go, guys.
Fabulous. I like, I like.
That's what we love about City Year.
We have to use that at the city. Well, since everybody's talking about what Orange County Public Schools means to them besides being so proud to live in this community and have such an amazing, amazing school system, I can't even begin to tell you. But, so you know, my son was a proud graduate of Winter Park High School 2008 IB program. He went to Stanford University from there and graduated last year, 2012, with his bachelor's degree from Stanford University, and he is now economically self-sufficient with a job. Thanks to all of you. And on Monday, his little brother starts Winter Park IB Ninth Grade Center. So thank you all very much for that. And there was something else I was going to say, but it'll come back to me. So I'm going to call your attention, I have a PowerPoint presentation, so I'm going to call your attention to the screen, and I believe you all have screens that you can see this at. Before I get into the details of this agreement, I want to give you sort of a broad-brush view from the city's perspective about why this is so important to us. I remember when Mayor Dyer asked me to come and serve as the city's first Director of Children in Education. And when he first became mayor of Orlando, one of the things he found from constituencies, the most important thing to them was their children's education. And so he knew that while, you know, he doesn't have governing authority over how our education system runs, that this was something that was very important to him, that he wanted to help impact. And as you all know, you know, you can do the greatest things within the schools, but at the end of the day, the kids go back home and back into the community and back into their neighborhoods. And if those neighborhoods don't support kids' success academically, socially, and emotionally, it makes your job much harder. And you are not the only ones accountable for how well our kids do educationally. Our whole community is accountable. And so that's where the city can come and help. What can we do back in the neighborhoods, back at home, back where the kids are, to help support them so that they can come to school in the morning, ready to learn, with the resources they need to be successful? So that's where we want to make our mark. What you see up on the board is that we have done that in many ways as a city, and I'm going to talk about the things that are actually under my supervision, under the Families, Parks, and Recreation Department. We do operate Orlando After-School All-Stars at every city middle school, and several of those, all the Title I schools, are actually 21st Century Community Learning Center sites. And we have all kinds of academic enrichments going on at those schools. A lot of the teachers at the schools are actually employed at the end of the school day and all through the summer, continuing the learning for those kids, basically extending learning into the after-school hours and through the summer. And just by way of one amazing example, this summer, as a result of outreach that Dr. Jara made to me, we actually focused on trying to get some of those middle schoolers to take a Orange virtual class this summer so that they would be up to speed, because now I guess that's a requirement, that every high schooler has to take one virtual class. And through this program, we had about 400 kids complete that requirement this summer through this program, the After-School All-Stars program. So we are happy to do that. This is what we see as our role, is to help, be that village, to help you accomplish your mission. We also, for the second year, had an amazing summer learning loss prevention program at eight of our city recreation centers. We have 15 recreation centers, about 2,500 kids there throughout the summer. Eighty-five percent of those kids are low-income because our summer camp is free-of-charge for low-income kids. And because of the work of the visionary people in your organization, actually started by Dr. Bridget Williams last year, and through the hard work of Katrina Somerville in your Title I department, you guys have deployed teachers to eight of our recreation centers located in the highest-poverty neighborhoods where your elementary schools are having problems with kids achieving third-grade reading standards. And this summer, they implemented whatever you were doing in your schools with your summer learning loss prevention program. You were also doing that at eight of our recreation centers, where we have many thousands of kids. And at our recreation centers, those kids did 43,115 minutes of reading through your program. So that was an amazing partnership. We are also now partnering with you with our After-School and Summer Meals program. You guys are actually cooking our meals and delivering them to our sites. This summer, just in June and July alone, you guys provided 116,000 meals and snacks to low-income kids at our city recreation sites, and that will continue year-round now, which is very exciting for us. I could go on and on, but now I want to talk about this new partnership, which is an amazing thing. So it's called OPAS, and it stands for Orlando Partnership for School Success. As Marcia spoke, it's funded by Volunteer Florida through the Corporation for National and Community Service, and the mission is to expand academic and social supports for youth in six of Orlando's most impoverished neighborhoods during the school day, after school, and in the summertime to move the needle on their academic performance. The lead agency is the City of Orlando. As Marcia said, the Families, Parks, and Recreation Department will administer it on behalf of the city, Orange County Public Schools, Orlando After-School All-Stars, City Year Orlando, and Heart of Florida United Way. AmeriCorps members will serve as tutors, student advocates, and mentors to approximately 600 youth. Members will provide targeted tutoring in language arts and math, mentoring for truancy, social skills and behavior issues, connections to wraparound supports, and student enrichment services, and family economic stabilization services. I'm going to talk in a little more detail about how that's going to happen. But first, Marcia said $581,000. That is per year, and it is a three-year grant. So the total amount over three years is just over $1.7 million, of which just over $400,000 a year is coming from the corporation, federal funding, and then partners are putting up about $182,000 in match. Those partners are the City of Orlando, City Year, and Heart of Florida United Way. There will be 32 full-time AmeriCorps members, and those members must complete 1,700 hours of service each annually. 20 members will go to the City of Orlando, and I'm going to talk about where those members will go. 10 members will go to City Year Orlando, and two members will go to Heart of Florida United Way. And that's, now I just remembered what I was going to say. So when Liba was introducing me, she talked about my service in the Dominican Republic. And I was young at the time, I was in my twenties, I'd just graduated from college, and I was out in the countryside, working with families in poverty. And when I see our City Year workers here, I know that you're getting the best and the brightest of people who really want to make an impact. So there's nothing that is of so much value as people like this who really want to serve. Okay, so I'm going to talk now about the subgroup of AmeriCorps members that will be employed by the city and work for the city. That's 20 of them. We are focusing on middle and high school youth. This is intentional because we, you know, in our scan of problems in neighborhoods around the city of Orlando, we find that while we have a relative strength when we work with younger kids, very often in many neighborhoods, the older youth are not getting that level of investment. A lot of them, we find, in some of the neighborhoods are on the streets, they're struggling in school, and, you know, there are issues of crime associated with it, and we're not seeing them graduate, go on, and become economically successful. So we have decided to focus on those neighborhoods around the city where we know we have a lot of older youth who are hanging around outside our rec centers, we have a lot of vandalism problems, crime problems, and we want to now start targeting that population. Each of those members will serve approximately 25 students. So it will be, they will be, each one will be responsible for the academic achievement, social, emotional, what's going on back in the neighborhood, in the school, for their group of 25 kids that they're assigned. They will be working with them both during the school day at the schools, and then after school, back in the neighborhood, where they will be posted at our recreation centers. The target neighborhoods are listed. One of them is Paramore, the other is Reeves Terrace. If you don't know where Reeves Terrace is, you can ask me when we get to the end, and I'd be happy to tell you. Rosemont, Washington Shores, Englewood, and Mercy Drive. Just to talk about the deployment of the 20 city members, four of them will be deployed to Paramore. We will be focusing on Howard Middle School and Jones High School, so some of them will be at Howard during the day, or Jones during the day, and then after-school, come back into the neighborhood. Either stay at Howard with the After-School All-Stars program at Howard, or come back into the neighborhood in Paramore to work with the youth, make sure that they get their homework done, that if they're having problems in school, that they help and advocate for them to stay successful. Reeves Terrace, the members will be posted at Howard, and then back in the neighborhood at the Langford Park Neighborhood Center, where we are now opening a teen center over the next month. At Englewood, they'll be posted at Jackson Middle School, and also at Orlando After-School All-Stars, at Jackson Middle School, after-school and in the summer, and then at Englewood Neighborhood Center. At Rosemont, they'll be posted at Lee Middle School, and then when school lets out, they'll be with Orlando After-School All-Stars at Lee Middle School and at the Rosemont Community Center. In Washington Shores, they will be at Carver Middle School, Lee Middle School, Orlando After-School All-Stars, after-school, which has a program at both Carver and Lee, and then at our Hankins Park Recreation Center. And then lastly, Mercy Drive, they will be posted at Carver and Jones during the day, and then after-school, they'll be at the Orlando After-School All-Stars location at Carver and at the Northwest Community Center. So they will be following the kids from school, they will have relationship with the teachers, know what's going on with the kids at school, and then go back into the neighborhood at the end of the day, make sure those kids stay on track for success at school. Okay, City Year Orlando. City Year Orlando will have 10 members, and this will allow them to expand to Catalina Elementary School. The members will follow the City Year whole school, whole child model, and they will work during the school year only. And Jordan is going to come up for a second when I'm done to speak about this and introduce her members. And finally, Heart of Florida United Way will get two members, and their focus is going to be on economics, economic stabilization. So, when the other members identify kids who are struggling with homelessness or on the verge of homelessness, United Way will be providing wraparound supports to stabilize families in terms of their home situation and economics. That's the role they're going to play. So, I have come to the end, and before I hit the Q and A, I'm going to ask Jordan Plant from City Year to come up and speak a bit and introduce her team. Jordan.
Chairman Soblet, Superintendent, members of the school board, thank you so much for allowing us to be a part of this evening's meeting. I have in front of me the 17- to 24-year-olds who are excited to serve as AmeriCorps members with City Year Orlando in Catalina, our sixth school here in Orange County Public Schools. And I believe you know a bit about City Year, and so I'd like to give over my time to have each of the core members introduce themselves and share why they serve.
My name, my name is Will Phillips. I'm the team leader for the team at Catalina Elementary School, and I serve because I've seen the tragedies that can happen when students give up on themselves, and I feel it's my responsibility to be a resource for these students, and so that I never have to see that tragedy again.
Hello, my name is Jalisa Turner, and I serve because I want to make a difference in children's lives and be a resource for them.
Hello, my name is Keisha Mathis, and I serve because I truly have a passion for working with young children, and I want to make a difference in as many lives as I can.
Hi, my name is Jackie Rodriguez, and I serve because I was lucky enough to be afforded every advantage in my education growing up, so I think every child should be given those opportunities.
Hi, I'm Esme Barniskas, and I had many options growing up, and I want every child to have the same options.
Hello, my name is Alex DeChico, and the reason I serve is because I think it's fun to begin, and also because I really dislike helping other individuals, and I think it's really important to do so.
Hi, I'm Amanda Quam, and the reason that I serve is to give back to the community and help students reach their full potential.
Hi, everyone, my name is Bhavana Vangtash, and I'm serving because I love working with kids, and I really wanted to commit a year to service.
Hello, my name is Shedlena Lindsay. The reason that I serve is because of the fact that I was one of those students that struggled a lot in school, and luckily I had people around me that supported me and helped me, you know, be successful. So I want to give back, and I want to be that inspiration to the next generation.
I'll allow that to close our presentation. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you, Ms. Early. Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, thank you. I really wanted to say to Ms. Lisa and Marcia, Ms. Marcia, Liba, Dr. Williams, I'm telling you, and Jordan, I remember when we, the board, were just starting out with City Year, and as I could hear the board members saying, "When are they coming in our area?" And I, I just want to commend you all for the effort, like you said, to send that grant in and be granted what you were granted. It's just remarkable, but you never stopped. I, I know that the chairman and the superintendent on behalf of this great board will be sending some letter of commendation to the mayor's office, because you have never left our side. It is not easy to put on a program like this. And, and now, my district was just so fortunate to be such a recipient, and as I looked up on the screen and saw how many more that you're going to add, and I know with Liba's help and, you know, and Dr. Bridgette, I could see them staying here late at night, trying to get those grants written, but you guys have taken it to another level. And personally, as the school board member for District Five, who has really been a great recipient of City Year, and all of the Paramore kids own, everything that you have done for us has just been wonderful, and we thank you for loving the children of Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Thank you.
Mr. Roach.
I had to chuckle at the young man that said he did it because it was fun, and because, you know, William Glaster said there was four pathways to success, and one of those pathways is fun. If it's not fun, he says you probably won't be very successful. So I, I laughed in a, in a healthy way. Wanted to just make sure I got that out there, but, you know, Morris Massey talked about, if you want to see the future, all you have to do is look at what's going on today, and that's, that will predict the future for you. And as, when this board set as its vision years ago, probably six or seven years ago, very, very tough vision called to be the top producer of successful students in the nation, that was a vision that was really kind of hard to imagine at first, but this is the kind of thing that we all knew would have to take place before that to occur. And so what we're seeing today with this, this effort from Orlando and City Year and the PTA are the kind of things that makes a school district superior, and makes a school district being able to launch itself into a magnificent model of education. So that's what we've got going. There's, you know, we have thousands of business partners in this town. Every two weeks seems like we're honoring somebody for contributing some way to our kids, and that's the way you take a large district and make it the very best. It's not the school system, it's the school system plus all the people that care about kids in the community. So that's what makes me very proud tonight, as I look at all the schools and all the neighborhoods you're going to be able to help out. And, and, and I also am very excited about, I know there's room for so many more partnerships and so many more efforts, so I'm just delighted tonight to see all this work that you've done, and, and really thank you for that effort.
Thank you, Mr. Roach.
Mrs. Robinson.
I too just want to say thank you so much. Y'all have been amazing partners over the years, and this is the most exciting thing I've heard in a long time. I've, I've seen how much y'all do with your After School All-Stars already, and then to add more professionals to help the students, and then to add City Year. I mean, I've seen City Year in all of my schools in District Six, and I'm just ready to get an elementary school in District Six. We're going to get that one next, but thank you, thank you, thank you. Please take thanks back to the city commission. Thank you for their time and their investment in the mayor. And I'll drop a note to Governor Scott for picking Orlando. Very exciting. And Mr. Roach, this is fun.
Thank you.
You know, I'm going to go out on a limb and try something. Last time I tried this, it didn't work. Jordan, City Year, what are we?
Fire!
All right, I've always wanted to do that. Thank you for coming through, Jordan. This is fun. You know, I, I'm, I'm feeling old up here because I've worked with Lisa for 20 years now in this community, and Marcia. When I first met Ms. Early, she was the Executive Director of the Howard Phillips Center for Children and Families. She was 10 years old at the time, and I was on her board, and Marcia's been a wonderful community partner, and the City of Orlando has just been an absolutely incredible community partner. And, you know, I, I'm going to take an opportunity to preach a little bit to our administrators gathered in this room from our schools, because I'm not sure always that folks down at the individual school level realize how blessed we are, the partnerships that we have with the county and city government in this community. And you look at other communities where a lot of times local governments are at each other's throats, or pointing fingers at each other for what else a community or what's going wrong. We don't have any of that in this community, and it's thanks to great leadership from Mayor Dyer and, and his predecessors, and great leadership from Mayor Jacobs and, and her predecessors. So Marcia and Lisa, thank you so much for all the City of Orlando does for our children. We value the partnership immensely, I think more than I can even remotely express. And I want to, go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you, Chairman. No, just say thank you, and, and the feeling is mutual. Definitely. Yeah.
And we're losing somebody, and I'm sure we're going to send her off properly here, but we're losing Dr. Liba Lyons. We're not losing her, she's retiring, which is cause for celebration, but it's cause for mourning at Orange County Public Schools, because she is largely responsible for City Year being in this community, along with Dr. Jenkins and before her, Mr. Blocker. But we are so blessed to have City Year, not only City Year, but Liba has brought so many other organizations to our system, and she has a vision that's unparalleled. And Liba, I'm not sure I'm going to get to see you again before you officially retire, but I just want you to know that I'm going to miss you immensely, and I know from the comments up here at the board table, we all are. It's our incredible loss, but we wish you the best in your retirement.
I, I, I thank you all very much. This working for the district has been a blessing to me, the opportunities that I've had here. I really can't describe to you adequately how wonderful this has been. I just, and, and, you know, I'm looking over at John Rudzik, and he's kind of grinning at me, because I would not be here if it weren't for him. I sent him a letter from Nottaway County, Virginia. Gosh, it's been 10 years, 11 years ago. And he saw fit to interview me, and I, for the life of me, I don't know why he hired me. But I asked him one day, and he says, "I was just intrigued, and I've always wondered what was intriguing." But, you know, but, you know, if it was, it was. So, my life has been one great improbable story, and, and so, just, just know that I'm retiring, but I'm not disappearing. I will continue to serve on the Board of Directors of City Year Orlando, and I will continue to serve as a member of the Healthy Children and Families Cabinet for the Heart of Florida United Way. So although I may be leaving the ELC, please know that I will be flittering around the periphery and, and trying to continue my support of the students of Orange County, who I love very much. So thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liba. And, you know, I, I've never shared this, and if you know Liba well, this won't make any sense, but I look forward to your first novel, because if you write like you speak, it's going to be one heck of a book.
Why did you say that? I haven't.
Good. I had a feeling you were. All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Early. Thank you, Marcia. Thank you. All right. Dr. Jenkins, I think we have some administrator recognitions, our favorite part of the meeting.
We have 12 introductions tonight, members of the board. We will start with Cindy Brennan, who was instructional support teacher at Maitland Middle School. She will become the Assistant Principal for Sunridge Middle.
I would like to thank this evening, Mr. Bill Soblet, SPS chairman of the board, Ms. Christine Moore, I look forward to working with you in the Sunridge community, Ms. Nancy Robinson, I'll miss working with you at the Maitland community, Dr. Barbara Jenkins, Dr. Jesus Jara, Dr. Bridgette Williams, Mr. Greg Moody, and Mrs. Patty Bowen Painter. I want to thank you for this opportunity and the challenge to make Sunridge Middle School the top middle school in the nation. And last but not least, I would like to thank my family, my parents, my family, my friends, my mentors, and coworkers who have supported me for all these years, and I am forever grateful. And now, I'm ready to begin my journey to soar with the Sunridge Eagles. Thank you.
Paul Browning was a resource teacher at Boone High School. He will be the new Assistant Principal at Lake Nona High School.
I'd like to begin by thanking Chairman Soblet and Ms. Flynn, who will be our, is our board member at Lake Nona High School, and all the members of the school board, thank you very much, as well as Dr. Jenkins, Superintendent, and Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Jara. I'd also like to thank Dr. Vasquez, the Area Superintendent of the Southeast, where I'll be going, and the Executive Area Director, Mr. Larson. And I'd like to thank Mr. Rudzik, who was transitioning to the Southwest at the time of the interviews, and thank you very much for that, and all the support that I had in the Southwest with Dr. Pope, Dr. Brown, and Dr. McMillan. I'd like to thank my family, Robin, my wife, and my mother, Barbara, and Dad, Ed, and Ms. Nampon, the principal of Lake Nona High School, that I'm very excited to be going to work with, and feel, I've been on the scene a couple days and feel very much part of the team, and that she's made me feel very welcome, and they have a tremendous history of achievement, but look forward to taking it to the next level to fulfill our vision of being the top producer of successful students. Thank you.
Next, we have Christine Corella, who is a Miami-Dade County Public School employee, coming to be Assistant Principal at Pinewood Elementary.
I'd like to, first of all, thank Chairman Soblet, as well as Dr. Jenkins, our Superintendent, as well as Deputy Superintendent Hara, and Associate Superintendent Schuler, as well as, I'm looking for, very forward to working with Principal Gochet. I would be remiss if I didn't thank my husband for his patience and his support. He is a Orange County employee and works at Boone High School. We got married in January, and we've been commuting back and forth throughout this time, so we're looking forward and living in the same house. So, again, I'd like to, to thank everyone, as well as the school board members, and also District Six Chairperson, Ms. Robinson, for this opportunity to bring my skills and experience to Miami, to Orange County, sorry. I have spent 12, 22 years in Miami-Dade County Public Schools and 12 as an Assistant Principal in Dade County, so I look forward to making a new professional home here in Orange County.
Sarah Donovan was resource teacher at Princeton Elementary. She will be the new Assistant Principal at Camelot.
I want to start off by saying it's an honor and privilege to serve the families and community at Camelot Elementary School. I want to start by thanking the school board, Chairman Soblet, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Jara. I also want to thank the leadership of the East Learning Community, Dr. Diaz, Mr. Wright, and school board member, Mrs. Cadel, for your support in my new role. I want to thank Principal Cory Aldrich. I am very excited to begin a new journey under your leadership. And I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to Principal Dr. Andrew Rollins and the Princeton Elementary family. You truly have been a support and inspiration on my path to leadership. I want to recognize my family, my parents, Randy and Ruth Scheidner. My dad's here from Pennsylvania today, and I'm just so grateful for your love and, and never-ending support. And a big shout-out to my husband, Hart, who truly carries my dreams as his own. So, thank you very much.
Denise Gonzalez was resource teacher at Hiawassee Elementary. She will become the Assistant Principal at Timber Lakes Elementary.
I first like to thank the board, Chairman Soblet, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Diaz, Dr. Jara, and Mr. Wright. I'd also like to thank Dr. Trey Wick, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Gramzinski, and Ms. Carlock. I look forward to working at Timber Lakes. Thank you.
That was Dennis, not Denise. Lyle Hines, resource teacher at Apopka Middle School, will become Assistant Principal at Apopka High.
I just want to take a moment to thank the chairman and the rest of the board members for this opportunity, also Dr. Jara, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Gordon, Dr. Fritzler, and I'm very excited to work with Mr. Guthrie at Apopka High School. Thank you.
Beverly Middleton was a reading teacher at Oak Ridge High School. She will become the Assistant Principal, Alternative Education.
Such a challenge, and I just want to thank you all, Chairman Soblet, board members, Superintendent Jenkins, Dr. Jara, thank you so much for making my last interview a little easier. I want to give a special thanks to Dr. Bernier in the back, who has taught me the importance of teamwork, and it's my dream to take teamwork into the alternative ed and really give those students that opportunity to turn around. A lot of them feel that they're at a dead end. A lot of them feel that they're at a dead-end street, and it's, that's really no such thing as a dead-end street because failure's not an option. So what we want to take to the team and bring to the students is that a dead-end street really is just the opportunity to make a three-point turn and turn around, and let's turn this into success. Mr. Rudzik, you have been a true passionate believer in me, and I want to thank you so much for inspiring me to keep going. Mr. Roach, you have been on this journey with me a long time, and I just can't thank you enough for your support. And Dr. Lawson, thank you for opening that door to education. I appreciate it. So I am ready for this journey, alternative ed. I did want to apologize, Dr. Jenkins, because when we do the Level Four Marzano and those light bulbs go on, we're going to have some power surges in Orange County. So I apologize ahead of time for the increase in the bill. Thank you all so much. Oh, and I can't forget my husband. Thank you, David, for all the support along this journey. Thank you so much.
Matthew Rebels was the instructional support teacher at Walker Middle School. He will become the new Assistant Principal at Avalon Middle.
Thank you, Chairman Sublett, Ms. Flynn. It's an honor to come serve one of your schools. And Mr. Roach, I know what Walker Middle School means to you and your start in your career along that journey many years ago, and you've been a great supporter of Walker, and Superintendent Jenkins, and Dr. Jara, and Ms. Diaz. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve in the East Learning Community, and especially to Mrs. Frank for selecting me as her candidate. My 15th year I'm starting in the District 12 of 14, being at the middle school level, and I really have a passion for our middle school students and excited to pursue my career at a higher level, at that level, at the middle school thing. And I want to specifically thank Mr. Wright, Mr. Rudzik, and Principal Rob McClell for sitting with me and really spending one-on-one time with me to see what it was like to become an instructional leader. And I would be remiss if I didn't honor my wife, who is the best situational leader that I know, and especially with my young children here, my six-year-old, five-year-old, and three-year-old, Carson, Sidney, and Allison. And doing great instructional things with them at an early age. So thank you for allowing me to honor my family and be here tonight. Thank you.
David Schmidt was instructional support teacher at Wakava High School, will become the Assistant Principal at Cypress Springs Elementary.
I'm extremely excited to join the team at Cypress Springs Elementary School. First, I'd like to thank the board, Chairman Sublett, Dr. Jenkins, Ms. Cadel, as well as the East Learning Community, Dr. Diaz, Mr. John Wright. A big special thanks to my administrative team, former administrative team at Wakava High School, Dr. Gruber, and the rest of the team. I'd be remiss if I did not say a big thank you to my beautiful wife, Danielle, and my three beautiful children, and as well as to Dr. Hanif. And looking forward to teaming with you to support the children, staff, and the community of Cypress Springs Elementary School.
Tammy Turner was resource teacher at Northlake Park Community School, will become the Assistant Principal at Riverdale Elementary.
Good evening. I would like to thank Chairman Sublett, the school board, board member, Mrs. Cadel. I look forward to working with you, as well as Dr. Jenkins, Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Jara, Area Superintendent, Dr. Diaz, Executive Area Director, Mr. Wright, as well as Wendy Wagner, Tiffany Griffin, Kwanah Lawson, and Margarita Ziza for being such great mentors and providing leadership opportunities for me at Northlake Park Community School. I am thankful for Mr. Sean McGuire at Riverdale, my new principal. I am excited to work with him. And my friends, colleagues, and family members, thank you for your continued support and encouragement, and I will continue working hard to accelerate the momentum. Thank you.
Erin Vacchio, instructional support teacher at East River High School, will become the Assistant Principal at East River.
Thank you so much. I'm so honored to be here tonight. Thank you so much to the school board, and Dr. Jenkins, to Dr. Jara, and Dr. Diaz, and Mr. Wright, wherever you are. Thank you very, very much. I'm very humbled to be here. I'm very excited to work with Mr. Lemon, as well as Ms. Cadel. And I know I wouldn't be here without the mentorship of my principal and Dr. Hilton that's here, and of course, the support of my family, both near and far, my husband, my two little boys. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Finally, we have Dusty Johns, Assistant Principal at Winter Park High School, to become the new principal at Freedom Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I want to thank the board, Chairman Sublett, my former school board member, Joey Cadel, for her tremendous support through my career. Mr. Rick Roach, look forward to it. It's going to be a fun ride. Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Jara, thank you for trusting me with Freedom Middle School. I promise you I will not let you down. My East Learning leadership team, Dr. Diaz, Mr. John Wright, Dr. Vasquez for her leadership in the past, and then the Southwest leadership team, Mr. Rudzik and Dr. Cuban McCoy, thank you for your, the opportunity and help through the process. And then my mentors in instructional leadership, Ms. Judy Frank and Dr. Gordon and Mr. Tim Smith, you have made me who I am today, and I really appreciate it. My family and my colleagues have come to support me, my beautiful wife, Cory Johns, and we were going to bring the 15-month-old daughter, Reagan May, but we were afraid that security would have us escorted out. So we did not do that. But thank you for everything, all your support. Love you guys, and I appreciate you being here.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our appointments for tonight. We believe that brings us to 100% staffed.
Hallelujah. Mr. Roach.
Matthew, thanks for your service to Walker Junior, Junior High, that's what it was when I was, when I was luckily hired there. And after getting turned down 20 times for interviews, I got hired there two days before school started. Yes, it's a very special school to me, and I appreciate you carrying the flag out there, and good luck to you. Dusty, you've got some big shoes to fill, but I've got a feeling, just in the two minutes I talk to you, you're going to do just fine out there at Freedom Middle. That's a really, really great school, great community, and I've got a feeling you're going to do really great things out there. And Mr. Chairman, school board members, I have to tell you, I'm going to take a little bit of personal privilege here and tell you that I also want to honor one of our new Assistant Principals tonight, who's a very good friend of mine, and I've seen her grow over the years. And I will tell you that Beverly Middleton and I started out together, she started before I did, but that was the guidance assistant at Boone High School when I was a counselor there in 1997. And Bev was just a big help. But since then, her career, I want to tell you what we've got. We've got a complete package here. She went from the guidance assistant, she got into special education, she's been a reading teacher, she's been a dean, she's been an Assistant Principal at a charter school. This is a certified registered nurse and a marine. And I would say that probably with either now or next week, in two weeks, she'll be a doctorate in education. And I'm going to tell you, and she's got about the biggest heart of anybody I know, including me, Mrs. Gordon.
I know.
That's an inside joke here, but she's a wonderful candidate. I'm so happy for Ms. Middleton. I'm just proud to call her my friend. Her family is almost a part of my family. She's been so close to us. So I know she's going to do great things for you, board members. I guarantee you, I would stake, I would stake my paycheck on it. How's that? But Bev, good luck to you. I'm so proud of you. And David, it's great to have you here tonight, and I know good things are going to happen. Thanks a lot.
Mrs. Robinson.
First, I want to say congratulations to everyone getting their new appointment tonight. It's really exciting to see so many wonderfully exciting faces and people ready to get going next week. Just gets me excited up here. I want to say I'm going to miss Cindy at Maitland, and I'm going to miss Sarah at Princeton. You guys are amazing, and it's always fun when you go to one of my schools and I see faces that look familiar, and you're now leaving District Six. I hope the new principals at Camelot and Sunridge know what they're getting. You're getting some fabulous ladies, so congratulations to y'all. And Ms. Corella, did I pronounce that right? I can't wait to meet you. And I know you're really excited to get out to Pine Wood and get all excited with Candace with the new technology. That's one of our pilots, Pine Wood Elementary is one of our pilot programs. And I'm so sad, I'm going to miss your, meet the teacher for the pilot program on Thursday, but I'll be off moving one of my daughters into her new apartment in another city and another state. But I just am going to come out and check it all out. I want to see the kids in action on their new technology. So anyway, congratulations to everybody.
Ms. Moore.
Ms. Brennan, I'm just so excited to have you join us out at Sunridge. And Sunridge has definitely been soaring because the very first year in existence, we had an A-school, and that's really do a lot to the leadership of Patty Bowen Painter, and appreciate the hard work. And for board, I know how many remember all our yearly luncheons with the Farm Bureau and the invaluable information they provide, and they came to us at least a year ago and said, "Did you all realize that at West Orange High School, we have a wonderful chapter, but you have no feeder schools with the FFA programs?" And so I'm looking forward to Sunridge having that next year right in the heart of, we gave the school its agriculture name, and it's sitting in the heart of Winter Garden. So I really look forward to working with you, Cindy. And I know I'm going to come out to see that agricultural program get off to a good start. And then Lyle Hines at Apopka Middle School, you're staying in the family from the middle school in Apopka to the high school. And I'm just curious, Mr. Guthrie, if you're going to put him on the senior wall at all the football games, because I had a wonderful time talking to Mr. Fitzpatrick all last year, and if you've never been to one of those games, when you can have 3,000, 4,000 people there, and you have to push your way through the seniors to get, because I always sit next to the band, of course, and, of course. And so anyway, I'm hoping that's your position, Mr. Hines, on the wall, because you'll be very busy on Friday nights if you get that job. So welcome to Apopka High School, and look forward to seeing you do a great job.
Mr. Repholz, I can't wait, and I wish you could be there. And when my kids start acting up next time, I'm going to turn to my wife and say, "Honey, isn't this time that you step up and situationally lead?" She's going to look at me and go, "What?" I'm going to say, "Call Mr. Repholz, he'll explain it." You know, I always like to recognize the kids, because we've had some wonderful children. It takes a long time to wait to get to this point. So can we have all of our children stand up and take a bow? Let us recognize the children. You guys have been wonderfully well-behaved tonight, and that's the children I'm talking about, so thank you. Well, I just want to echo my colleagues and say congratulations. I always like to share when we come to this point in the meeting with the friends and family of our newly appointed administrators, that to me, this is all about one word, and that's trust. And this appointment means that this board trusts your abilities as educational leaders. It means that we trust your leadership abilities. It means we trust your judgment, and most importantly, it means that this board and administration trust you with our children's future. So it's quite a compliment, and congratulations on your appointments. And school hasn't started yet, so go out and celebrate a little bit tonight. Thank you. Congratulations. And at this time, nobody ever takes me up on this, you may go, unless you really want to see the sausage made, but nobody does, so go have a good evening.
I'm a student at Harvard.
I'm IT.
Cal Tech.
Columbia.
Our advantage: support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocpss.net or call 407-317-3200.
All right. Any individual who would like to address an item on the consent or non-consent agenda may do so by completing a yellow form at the board table. You can get that form from Mrs. McGill, which is the lady sitting at the far left-hand side of the dais. I will call you to speak when the item you have signed up for is before the board. You will have three minutes to address the board. If you have schedule constraints, please let us know. Dr. Jenkins, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Board members, and forgive me, I forgot to mention this, there are four items that I do want to pull off the consent and put on non-consent, and that's 1401, 1402, 1403, and 1404. So if there's no objection, I'll move those to 1601, 1602, 1603, and 1604. And I'm not going to say anything on it, board members, but those are just four capacity enhancement agreements. I think we do at this time, since I pulled those off. So with that, can I have a motion to approve the agenda? It's been moved by Mrs. Robinson. Is there a second to that? It's been seconded by Ms. Gould. Is there any discussion or debate on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the agenda adopted. All right. We are now on the consent agenda. I don't believe I have any public speakers. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, can I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda? It's been moved by Mrs. Gordon, by seconded by Mr. Roach. Is there any debate or discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. We're now on new item 16.01, which is approval of the school concurrency mitigation agreement for Lake Cove Phase V and Phase V-A. Board members, does anybody, because I know you all get briefed on these, do we need a briefing, explanation of this one? Otherwise, I'll just take a motion to approve it. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve that?
I move the approval.
Okay. It's been moved by Mrs. Gordon and approved. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Roach. Is there any discussion or debate on that one? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Nay. Show that adopted by a seven-to-one vote. All right. The next one is 1602, which is a capacity enhancement agreement for Hindu University. Again, does anybody need that explained, or do you all understand it?
No, we understand.
Okay. Motion to, yes, Ms. Flynn.
Motion to approve.
Moved to approve by Ms. Flynn, seconded by Ms. Cadel. Any debate or discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did you have a discussion?
I did.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Flynn.
I'm sorry. I did want to say, because this particular one is in District Two and District One, and I just, I just wanted to say that I certainly understand your position, Mr. Chair, and I think it speaks to what we, a discussion, at least for the people who are, might be watching this, a discussion in regard to the mitigation fees, how we asked about having a plan for those. Because for this particular one, you know, first, and Mrs. Cadel might have thought the same thing, Mrs. Salvo was the staffer who told me about this one. It's one of those things that if you don't approve it now, they can come back, it might be more, we might not get the mitigation fees. Is that correct on this particular one?
Mr. Chairman. Dr. Jenkins, may we come up to the lectern? Ms. Salvo, want to address that?
Yes. If, this is one where if we don't approve it now, they could come back at some point, and if capacity's available, we won't have any mitigation to collect from them.
Thank you. And so I just want to say that's one of the reasons why I personally wanted to vote for it and support it, because it's one of those catch you now or catch you later, and again, why I call for us having a little bit more of a plan that we can see where those mitigation fees are going to go to. So I just wanted to explain why I was voting for these and some of the others, and certainly, again, understanding your viewpoint. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, and I punched my button. First of all, I want to thank you for calling for a work session on that, and secondly, you know, board members, just for what it's worth, and I'm looking forward to that work session, because I think, you know, staff has been looking at how we can direct mitigation fees and CEA fees and concurrency fees to either regions or specific schools that are overcrowded, because candidly, these votes are a little bit painful for me, but you know, it's just a philosophical issue for me. But I will share with you, I don't want to jump the gun too much, but when we figure out a way to make sure that the mitigation fees and the capacity enhancement fees go towards relieving overcrowding at those schools, I will be the first to vote yes on all of these. Just right now, it's been a tough vote for me, but thank you for your understanding. All right. Any further discussion on that? All right. Is there a motion to approve that one? Can I, I think it's already been moved and seconded. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Show that adopted on a seven-to-one vote. All right. The next one is 16.03, which is a capacity enhancement agreement for BOA, Nearborn Plan Development, PD.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval of the school mitigation agreement for the capacity enhancement. That's in Mr. Roach's area and my area, and we welcome. That's in Mr. Roach's area and my area, and we welcome that impact.
All right. It's been moved by Mrs. Gordon, seconded by Mr. Roach. Is there any further discussion or debate on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of that, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Nay. Show that adopted by a seven-to-one vote. All right. We're on 16.04, the last one. That's a CEA for parcel G at World Gateway. Can I have a motion unless an explanation is needed to approve that one?
Again, Mr. Chairman, that is in Mr. Roach's area and my area. And again, we ask that the board approve that capacity enhancement agreement for the 1604.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. It's been moved by Mrs. Gordon, seconded by Mr. Roach. Is there any debate or discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, nay. Show that adopted on a seven-to-one vote. Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Salvo. Appreciate that. All right. We are now on -- any information on those reports by attorneys? Did I forget something? Okay. Mr. Rodriguez, anything from council?
Yes. Board members, Mr. Chair, just have a couple of announcements to read off. Before I do, I just want to remind you that we will be sending out -- both Kathy Pope and myself are probably from her office. She'll be receiving some information on the appointment of the Unitary Status Advisory and Oversight Committee, as was recommended by Ms. Gordon at the previous meeting. We were going to be reshaping this board to include not one, but two individuals. So, we would like you to be thinking aggressively about finding two folks. That way, we can restructure the policy going forward. The policy will come to you probably sometime in October or November. But in the interim, we'd like to get them on board, have an introductory meeting sometime in September. Our plan is if we can get all of the appointments in the next week to 10 days, that we can have it up for your approval at the next board meeting at the end of August. If that's not enough time, obviously, we will work with your schedules. But I'm hoping that if you have a need for assistance, you can contact me, contact Ms. Pope. The first of the two announcements I have to read off involves an executive session. I will advise you that on August 20th, we did have originally scheduled a workshop or a work session on the distribution of just materials in schools. Because we have pending litigation now, we have instead decided to schedule an executive session. So, the School Board of Orange County, Florida will meet in an executive session on August 20th, 2013, immediately following a scheduled 4:00 p.m. school board work session on the ninth floor Superintendent's Conference Room at the Ronald Blocker Educational Leadership Center here located at 445 West Amelia Street, Orlando, Florida, to discuss settlement proposals in the matter of freedom from Religion Foundation, Inc. versus Orange County School Board. The meeting will be transcribed by a court reporter, and the transcript will be available to the public review at the conclusion of the litigation as prescribed by statute. The following persons may be in attendance: all school board members, Superintendent Barbara Jenkins, General Counsel Diego Woody Rodriguez, Associate General Counsel John Palmorini, outside counsel Howard Marks, and a court reporter. And in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities persons, we're needing -- we're not going to need accommodations, but if you need accommodations to participate in this proceeding, please contact the school board services in advance. And then, so, we will have to discuss some sensitive topics there as well, because we just did receive that lawsuit. So, please have that on your calendar. And that will follow four rule development workshops that are already scheduled for that day. So, we will have a busy plate. The second issue is that there is a notice hereby, given that the members of the School Board of Orange County will meet this evening, an executive session on August 13th, following tonight's school board meeting on the ninth floor at the Ronald Blocker Leadership Center to discuss collaborative bargaining. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Not all of us heard, what is the date of the executive session on the?
It's the same date that we would have had scheduled for the workshop, August 20th. It's just we're, instead of having the workshop, we're going to have the executive session instead. So, we're really replacing one for the other and being able to discuss these issues. And you'll get a good briefing from our outside counsel on similar issues you would have been briefed on otherwise.
Okay. And that will immediately follow the work session that day?
We will have a -- for workshops on four different policies. Legal will be not on that topic, correct? And we'll be considering those four policies as we normally do. I think Legal has a lead on two or three of those. And immediately after that, we'll be meeting in the executive session.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. McGill, do you have any of the work session schedules? Did you bring -- can you pass those out before we go further? All right. Any questions, Mr. Rodriguez, before I go to Dr. Jenkins? All right. Dr. Jenkins?
Just one announcement for the board and for the listening public. We were very pleased last Friday, two weeks ago Friday, to attend the Orlando Sentinel event. One of your board members, Ms. Gould, was there along with Dr. Kent and her staff members, Dr. Jara, and myself, Orange County Public Schools and Ms. Gordon. Orange County Public Schools was recognized for the second year as one of the 100 best places to work in central Florida.
You know, well, you just went -- I just want to extend kudos to the superintendent and her leadership team as well. I don't know if you all have had feedback, but I have had such tremendously positive feedback over having the counselors at the high schools this summer from lots of parents. And I really want to give her kudos as well, and her team, and Mr. Fritz and Dr. Fritz and the entire team, Dr. Jara. The Connect Orange on the high school schedules being available, it may seem like a small thing, but truly, not only have I had feedback from parents on that, but my wife, who tells me, because she monitors this stuff, I don't, but it's also burning up the Instagram lines with all the kids saying, "Hey, you can go down to the high school and get your schedule." And a lot of them are saying, "Are you kidding me? Really? How'd you get your schedule?" They're going down to the schools and they're getting their schedules. So, thank you, Dr. Jenkins and your team, for making that happen. I think it's a very good thing that we did there.
Let me weigh in on that, too.
Mr. Roach, yes.
I want to thank the entire board for not only the support of high school counselors, but elementary counselors. That is a tremendous move, one that I'm very, very proud of. In the last 15 years I've served on this board, this board really stepped up, and they did so quickly. And Mr. Sublet, you too. I think you were very, very interested in that extra hours for the high school counselors. And all the board deserves credit for that. But I think you were -- you're a non-counselor, and you spoke up. And I think that's what, you know, you get a return on investment when you do that. You give counselors time, and you pay them for the time, and you're going to get the results that you're looking for. So, I'm just real pleased for the counselors at Orange County. It's such an important role, and I think they got a lot of attention this year, more so than the previous years. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. All right. We're on committee reports. Mrs. Gordon, Community Action Board.
The Community Action Board report is in the packet. I do ask you to read it. There was a needs assessment given by the -- I'm sorry. There was a need assessment that was given by the organization that actually did it. It is a very interesting report. It addresses poverty, and as one of the main needs, they're working on this. And they talked about how high the rate for poverty has gotten in Orange County. But they really felt that to combat poverty, education was a key issue. So, we will be working along with the Community Action Board and that entire board on working ways. And they're going to probably ask for our help to see if there are some things that we can do to educate those students and adults that have even dropped out of school. So, please, go through that report. It is very, very important. It's just the beginning of a new year, and poverty is something very serious in this county. It may look good on the outside, but in the inside, once you go through that report. But they did mention, you know, the jobs and technology and education as a mean for combating poverty in Orange County, Florida. So, Dr. Jenkins' staff is already on board, working along with Mayor Jacobs and the Community Action Board. So, I'm not going to read anything out of there, but just read what they said in reference to the needs assessment. And, Mr. Chairman and board members, that's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. All right. Any other committee reports I may have omitted or announcements? Okay. Work session schedule, board members. There have been some changes, so I'm going to blow through these, but slow me down if you want to hear any more detail. We're taking up the legislative platforms, August 20th. Ms. Flynn, thank you for your leadership on that. There is one document that I'm going to bring to the table at that work session. I'm going to ask Ms. McGill to get it to any of you all who want it, or frankly, just distribute it to all of you all. Many of you are familiar with a group called LULAC, which is -- I don't want to describe them, because I'll describe it wrong, but they're essentially a Hispanic advocacy group. They also have a semi-legal component to them as well. And they're national. They have a resolution that they've asked us to consider as a board. Just so you know, I'm distributing -- I don't really have an -- not that this matters, but I don't really have an opinion on it at this time. It's a very lengthy resolution. The resolution seems to parallel something that's been done at the National School Boards Association level. So, take a look at it, because I'd like us to sort of talk about that at that work session. And I'd like your leadership on that, too, Ms. Flynn, to see if that's something we could work. Because I think it could be a good move for this board if there's a way that it fits within our agenda.
And Mr. Howitt has it?
We're going to get it to Mr. Howitt today as well. I just got it to Ms. McGill today, and I asked her to get it to the superintendent, Mr. Howitt, you, Ms. Flynn, and every member of the board.
Thank you.
So, you have a chance to look at it. I haven't had a chance to study it, by the way. It's about four pages long. So, it's lengthy. We have our retreat on August 29th. Thanks to Mrs. Robinson, we're going to do that again at Urban Think. It was sort of a fun location last time. Yeah. Hopefully, the parking is -- I think we've all figured it out now. And they're also doing a deal where they'll validate our sticker if you'll make a $5 contribution to them, if you want to do that. Is that right, Ms. McGill? And, you know, board members, just as an FYI, now that you know where it's at, there is always plenty of street parking on a Thursday at that time at 4:00, right there on the corner of Eola and Central. So, you don't have to park anywhere. I never do at that time of day. You can park free on the street right around the corner there. Retreat topics, we haven't gone a lot. I've gone some from a couple of board members. So, any retreat topics, get those into Ms. McGill. I will do my best to get a proposed agenda out to you all by Monday or Tuesday, so it's out a week and a half early. It's been a busy July for me, so forgive me for not getting it out sooner, but I'll get you out an agenda by then. Yes, Mrs. Robinson, please.
I just want to say, since Urban Think Foundation is a nonprofit organization, I serve on the board for them, they usually charge a rental fee. And I'm working to get a contributor to donate what would be the rental fee for us to be able to use it. Because here we are, a governmental agency. We don't want to hurt one of our nonprofits by not helping them. So, just want to let you all know, they're not technically going to give it to us for free. I've -- they have said they would, but I've offered to make sure a donor covers that for us. So, well, they're doing such great things for our schools, you know? They do such wonderful -- they did a great reading camp and writing camp for kids, inner-city kids this summer, and it's exciting. So, I want to make sure we support them as well as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. And we're going to make sure that that's taken care of, one way or the other. Ms. Cadel?
I'm not sure. It's not a policy thing, but there's -- it's just something that I wanted to say. You know, I think we all have been to a back-to-school event, a community back-to-school event, in probably the past two weeks. The county commissioners have all had backpack giveaways. There was the big event out at the Citrus Bowl. And, you know, it's humbling, and it reminds us that we still have a lot of children who have great needs. And that if the community does not open up their hearts and do events like this, that we have a lot of children who are showing up to school the first day of week, maybe with tooth pains, you know, they haven't had a shot. They were doing eye exams. Out at the Biflo Community Park, when I was out there on Sunday, the line was huge for the people who needed things out in that neighborhood. And the one thing I noticed, I happened to be working the booth with Orange County Emergency Management, and we were handing out weather radios, so, you know, if there's a hurricane or whatever coming. And they were free weather radios, and all you had to do was write your name and your address and your email address and your phone number. And in all of these talks that we are having about digital and how we're going to service the children, I would say there were at least maybe eight people on every page that had no email address. So, as we start working through, and the children of Biflo go to Corner Lake. And Corner Lake is the pilot, the demonstration pilot school in my district. So, I think we're going to learn really quickly how many children are going to have the access at home and how many are not. But I want to say thank you to the community, because the needs of many, many, many children have been met in the past three weeks. And it's interesting, we were even getting children from Osceola County and Seminole County and Brevard County coming to Biflo for assistance.
Well said, Ms. Cadel. And, you know, we need to have those folks down there put on those events to recognize them as well. And you just prompted me to remember that we need to schedule a board recognition night as well this fall. So, we'll get that on the schedule. After that, and again, board members, then, we have on September 3rd Magnet Schools, Innovation Schools, and Gifted. You'll see that we have canceled the September 12th work session on charter school applications. We had two board members out then anyway, and we had 17 submitted, and we're hoping that that gets thinned a little bit before we get to the review hearings. But we can get through those wherever it ends up being 14 to 17 applications in two nights. So, we freed up that night. Then we're doing the school improvement plans that one of our colleagues had asked for, that we do as quickly as possible on October 1st. Then we're doing teacher recruitment, minority achievement initiatives, and transformation schools, digital curriculum, CEAs, concurrency, and capital renewal coming up. Then we've got those two audit reports, along with recommendations from the superintendent on implementation. Then we have school maintenance. We're circling back on October 29th, expanded language offerings. And we have SES tutoring we're circling back on, parent academy and suspensions and expulsions. And then on the back there, we have CT programs, alignment and delivery, and career pathway diplomas coming up in January. So, hopefully, we've captured all the requested work sessions from you all. If we're missing something, let me know, and we'll get it scheduled. Are there any questions on the work session schedule? All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order? All right. We have an executive session upstairs. We'll see you all up there. We are adjourned.
Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core State Standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So, you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at commoncoreworks.org.
I'm a student at Harvard.
I'm IT.
Cal Tech.
Columbia.
Our advantage?